As Board Secretary, I would like to call the January 12th, 2023 regular Board meeting of the Pickens County Board of Education to order. Welcome, everyone. It is wonderful to see everyone here this evening. Thank you for attending. I would like to ask Steve Lau to lead us in the invocation.
Father, Lord, we just thank you for your goodness today. We want to thank you for protection from the storms, as I know our school system staff had to worry about that today, and we're grateful that that's passed. Lord, thank you for our staff, our administrators, our school system, all the people here working to work with our kids and our community. Lord, thank you for our guests here tonight and those who are being recognized for all the good things that you're doing in our community. And Father, I just pray you give us wisdom, understanding, guidance, direction, as we seek the absolute best for our kids and our community. And I ask that in Christ's name. Amen.
We'd like to ask for an indication from Joe Wiggington. Your pleasure.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item is approval of the agenda. I would like to make a motion to amend item 9C. Do I hear a motion?
Yes, I make a motion to amend it.
Do I hear a second?
I'll say.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Okay. Item 9C has been amended to approval to pursue a superintendent search with Georgia School Board Association. The next order of business is the election of the school board chair for 2023. Board policy, BBA, states the Pickens County Board of Education shall elect by majority of vote a chairperson and vice-chairperson annually at the first meeting of the board each calendar year. Each such officer shall hold office until their successor has been elected. I'd like to open the floor for nominations for chairperson.
So I'd like to make a motion to...
Tommy's been here for two years. I'd like to make a motion for Mr. Gartrill to serve as our board chair for 2023.
Okay, thank you. Is there any discussion? Are there any other nominations? Okay. May I have a motion to close nominations for the position of board chair?
I move.
Joe Wiggington? Seconded by Steve Lau. May I have a motion for Tommy Gartrill to serve as board chair for 2023?
I move that we approve Tom as our board chair for 2023.
Seconded by...
Second.
And vote for Tommy Gartrill as board chair? Five, zero. Thank you. Tommy Gartrill has been elected as board chair of the Pickens County Board of Education. The board chair will now take over the meeting.
Yeah, I can switch over.
You forgot your hat.
It's okay.
They know who I am. I'd just like to tell you I'm extremely uncomfortable at this moment in time now, but I'll do the best I can. Next on the agenda is the selection of the school vice chair. I would like to open the floor to nominations for vice chair. Do I have any nomination?
I don't know. Steve Lau as vice chair.
Is there a second nomination?
Second.
Do you have a motion in a second for Steve Lau to be vice chair? Is there any discussion? Are there any other nominations? I have a motion to close nominations for this position.
Move.
Second.
I have a motion in a second to close nomination for the chair. I have a motion for Steve Lau to serve as the vice chair of the board for 2023.
Move.
Second.
I have a motion for Steve Lau to serve as vice chair of the board. Hold up the paper. Steve Lau is the vice chair of the Pickens County School Board for year 2024. Let's move with the agenda. Recognitions: Hill City Elementary, 4th grade, was Georgia Foundation for Agriculture Fall STEM Challenge. Destiny. Would you please tell us more about that?
Sure will. Good evening, members of the board, Dr. Goodman and other attendees. Mrs. Krista Shipman's 4th grade gifted class at Hill City Elementary recently participated in the Be in the Know, Conserve H2O STEM Challenge sponsored by the Georgia Ag Experience, Georgia Foundation for Agriculture, Georgia Farm Bureau's Ag in the Classroom, and Georgia Association of Conservation Districts. The challenge is a biannual competition that focuses on a real-world ag problem and allows students to explore aspects of Georgia agriculture. 3rd, 4th, and 5th grade students who participate in this statewide challenge are hoping to be a winner. Winning projects receive a $250 grant plus a $100 prize. This year's question was, how can we improve gardening spaces while using water conservation practices? Since the purpose of the competition was to help students understand how Georgia farmers must conserve and protect water and how they can conserve it when gardening, Hill City's agriculture teacher, Mrs. Chapman, was an integral part of helping the students complete the challenge. At this time, let's take a few minutes and watch these students in action as they explain their project.
Hey, how are you?
I'm great. That's good. This is a water container. We're using it to water our vegetables. Here, let me tell you how we use it. We're in agriculture class one day, and Ms. Chapman was talking about conserving water and ways to plant gardens. Since more land is being developed, there is less space for gardening.
The problem that the farmers are going to have now is you have less land, but you got to have more food in order to feed everybody.
We need to make the demand for water is increasing at a faster rate than population growth. The world's population has tripled in the last 70 years, but the demand for water has increased six times as much.
Since we can't make more water, we have to be resourceful with what we have. Places like hospitals, gas stations, and fire stations need large amounts of water in order to provide their services to a community.
Can you imagine not having these services or enough water to drink and use for food? I never thought of it that way. How can we conserve water?
Farmers had to learn different ways to conserve water in order to grow more plants. Many now use pivot or drip irrigation to deliver water directly to the plant's root. Drip irrigation may require less than half as much water as spray systems allow by reducing labor and operating costs. And not only farmers, but people in communities can conserve water.
So how did you use this information that you learned at school?
I'm so glad that you asked. We decided that since our space is limited, that we would build a vertical garden. That way, our crops are planted up and down and take up very little space.
We had to make sure we had soil that was good for planting, so we invited our county extension agent to come and test the soil for us.
Thanks, Justin. I was the extension office here, so I gave out how the ag finds the farmers.
He gathered samples from two areas and sent them to the UGA to be checked out. Our results showed that the first sample had too much phosphorus and little potassium. The second sample is just the opposite.
I never realized that the type of soil was important. I thought that all soil was the same.
I did also until we learned more about soil in class and discussed the results of the sample test. We used that information to choose our soil for planting.
We chose this soil because it's low in phosphorus, so we're going to add it with the next.
How did you decide where to plant?
We looked at several areas around the playground, documented our observations, and discussed which areas would be the best gardening spots.
So we think this spot is good because it's not salted. It will be raining because there's no trees to stop it.
I think we should plant plenty, but it has enough sun. It also has enough shade, and it's close to the water.
Once we chose the spot that was most beneficial, we built our vertical garden box. We had help from Mr. David in the maintenance department. He explained that the material was recycled, and he helped us attach the pieces and move the soil to put inside the box.
So right now, we've been planting cabbage and broccoli. Later, we're going to be planting it up by the fence.
How is this container getting enough water to use for your garden?
That's the neatest part. While learning different ways to conserve water, we learned about using condensation from air conditioners.
Water from air conditioners? Is that safe?
Yes. We're surprised to learn that the condensate is as pure as distilled water, so it's good for watering plants. Since it does like minerals, though, it's important to add the proper nutrients for best growth.
Is there enough condensation to water the plants?
I was even more surprised than learning that condensation is a good source of water harvesting. Mr. Lance, our HVAC technician for our school system, came and taught us all about condensation. We cannot believe how much condensation our air conditioners make.
As the water that's coming out of these air conditioning units, just at one school for one year, we could fill over 1,000 fire trucks completely to the top.
That's awesome!
How did you get the condensation from the air conditioners to your garden?
Mr. Lance ran a pipe from the air conditioning units to this container. When we need water to water the plants, we can get water from it. Since they're only using water from this container, they're not using it most importantly to not wasting any water at school.
How did your garden turn out? Did your crops grow?
The plants can take up to 90 days to be ready to harvest, but look how they've grown since we planted them. Already worked!
Wow, that's amazing!
I hope we are able to help you learn a little more about conserving water and how we can use it to help improve gardening spaces.
We can all make a huge difference in water conservation if we all just raise some effort.
So as you can see, throughout the process, these students worked diligently researching and recruiting individuals both in the school system and in the community to help them by providing needed information. Mr. Justin Fellenbaum with the Pickens County Extension Office, and Mr. David Chapman and Mr. Lance Chapman from the Pickens County School District Maintenance Department. This was a wonderful hands-on collaborative learning opportunity, solving a real-world problem. Congratulations to Mrs. Shipman's 4th grade class for winning this STEM Challenge competition. So at this time, I want to invite Mrs. Halfco, Mrs. Kretschmar, Mrs. Shipman to come up along with all of the students. Mrs. Chapman? If you don't want to stand in the middle there.
Just work over this one.
If you don't want to stand up, then they can. Hey, we have a certificate you can hang in your classroom.
My compliments.
The next item is superintendent reports. Okay, thank you. I have two things to report on that are due to come up this year, one of them being strategic planning process. And we will be beginning the strategic planning process hopefully by the end of January with the support of Georgia School Board Association, in that we will be sending out public surveys and asking for external and internal stakeholders to meet on action planning teams, and that includes board members. So we'll be hearing more about that. Our current strategic plan runs out in June 2023, so we hope to have that completed as soon as possible before June. Secondly, there have been several requests, going back to first semester actually, about taking another look at start and stop times for schools related to bus schedules. And so we will also be getting a committee together, including internal and external stakeholders, to talk about what options we do have for start and stop times for all of the schools and making the most efficient use of the bus drivers and buses that we do have. Okay? Thank you. And next, we have financial updates from Amy Smith.
Thank you, Dr. Goodman. I don't know if we want to torture the children with my report. I know there's some times labeled. If you would like to leave, this is your opportunity to escape. Give it just a moment. I usually clear the room, so. Ms. Martha has pulled up our first report, which is our general fund reporting. As of December 2022, we have collected 60.14% of our budgeted revenue and expended 40.11% of the approved budget. For the new board members, don't get too excited about that. The way it runs with our non-12-month employees, in the month of June, we actually will record three payrolls. That will be for June, July, and August. That way, they have a paycheck through the summer. So this always runs a little bit behind, so don't get too excited. We still make sure we're on track and let you know if anything gets too early. Our next section, if you'll scroll down, is our consolidation of funds, Fund 150. This is a blend of general fund and federal funds. By blending or consolidating these funds, it gives the school-level staff the opportunity that it gives them some flexibility, and it reduces the red tape and paperwork. You can cheer now. At their level, it actually brings some of it to the central office, but that way, they have more flexible funds to use from the federal programs and less paperwork to do with it. I think they've liked it. So we will... There was a lot of red tape and a lot of paperwork with some of the federal funds. This does give them the opportunity to do a few more things, get outside the scope of the strict scope of some of those grants. But we are still compliant. It is still approved through the federal grant program and the consolidated application system with the Department of Education. So it is all approved. They know what we're doing, and they do monitor it. We will have a monitoring in April of this year, so they will definitely tell us if they don't like anything. I'm always pleased to report we currently have no debt for the system. And actually, I got a little excited and jumped ahead. The Fund 150 expenditures are actually reflected through December. We actually do have to do a system of transfers from general fund into federal programs. Those transfers are only done through November at this time because there is an approval process that does take a couple of weeks. So we always run a little behind, but that's why sometimes you'll see that we have exceeded the budgeted amount. But again, we are still on track, and we review those each month, so we do stay where we're supposed to. No debt. Capital outlays, SPOS revenue for December 2022 was $712,634.66. Interest earned was $1,819.48. Our expenditures were $281,624.72, which brought our month-end SPOS balance to $9,109,650.40. This is a combination of SPOS 5, which is still open. We still, we haven't spent all the money. We have around 1.1 million left in that fund, and every month we earn interest, so we'll have a little bit more. We have a couple of, we have the PHS ag project. We still have around $760,000 just with the contractor. Still have an open contract with the architect and a couple of other items. We have a bus purchase. We have a purchase warrant that y'all had approved with previous board for $672,000. When these items come in, that will pretty well take care of balance left on SPOS 5. So we may have a project that splits SPOS 5 and SPOS 6. I was asked, and since you're new, I'm going to go ahead and throw this out there. We do have to maintain separate records and separate funds for those SPOS. I have to track every penny that we earn, spend, and transfer to, like if we have GS I C earnings for a project, have a donation for a SPOS project, all of that must be transferred into SPOS and expended at that level. So you will see sometimes more money than we actually collect in SPOS eventually run through SPOS. I will bring y'all the total of SPOS 5 once we close that project, just so you can see over the period of time how much we earned in total, what type of revenue it was, and how we spent it. And just to show you that it does match up, we have to match up to the penny and prove that when we close a SPOS. So every penny of that interest we have to track, so we'll keep you updated on that. Our special revenue funds, and remind you, this consists of school nutrition program, our SPOS, excuse me, our federal grants make up this category. We have collected 39.83% of our budgeted revenue and expended 56.60% of our budgeted expenditures. Again, don't panic. This is a pull situation most of the time with federal grants. We have to spend the money first, and then we can ask for reimbursement. So that is why you see we have spent more money than we have brought in. But by year end, that will zero out, or we have to record it as outstanding. Y'all have any questions? I will share a little bit of good news. Governor Kemp today in his inaugural address said that he is recommending for the FY24 budget, a $2,000 increase for teachers, pre-K teachers, and other certified personnel. That is the recommendation. That has not passed anybody. But just so you know, just for clarification purposes too, sometimes we get a little, we have a little miscommunication from the state level to hear, but that was what was said today. Very pleased to hear they're going to continue to support education in this manner. Lots of other grants, state-level grants, to support things like paraproses who want to become a teacher. Don't have all the details, but these were things he was talking about today. Learning loss grants and grants for security. So as we get information, once they pass, and we get information when we pass it along to the board, and hopefully we will get some of those grant funds. We will be applying, I'm sure. Y'all have any other questions? Mr. Wallace, operations?
Good evening, board members. Dr. Goodman, appreciate the opportunity to be here. Start out with covering a few maintenance items. Just really want to give a shout out to our maintenance guys, our whole staff there. These guys, as I mentioned in here, they don't get a lot of time off. They're on 260-day calendar, so they do get a little time around Christmas, and we had to, we had to ask for some of that back over the break just with, due to some weather issues that we brought you guys up to speed on. But anyway, just want to give them a shout out. They're also still helping with transportation and driving. We've got a couple of guys that drive every day, and we're grateful for that because we need them, and they're glad to do so, and we really appreciate what they're doing. Have been able to back one of them off as much driving, so got everybody back healthy right now in transportation. That's helped out a great deal. So also, Maintenance Worker Appreciation Day is in March, and that's coming up Friday, March 3rd, and so we will be doing some nice things for them where we have a school that's reached out about wanting to do something for them as well. And so appreciate our school's support and maintenance guys. They certainly try to support those schools by taking care of any problems they have. Also, I always like to do a work order update, and this gives you an idea. Maintenance departments received 890 school maintenance requests through 110, excuse me, that should be 23, but 110, 23 there this past, this week. So get a lot of requests, and there's a lot that can go wrong. So, you know, they stay pretty busy. So a great, great group, and I'm really proud of what they do for us. From a facility standpoint, referring to the damages we received as a result of some of the frozen pipes and busted pipes, obviously, the focus has been on the fill house, and proud to report that the mitigation company has come in and taken up anything that could hold moisture in that area that was damaged. It's really been cleaned out, all the contents, of course, anything that can be salvaged, anything that can be treated, obviously, we've taken care of that. We've used local companies. They've been great. They were Johnny on the spot, and they had a lot of work going on, and they really tried to prioritize us, so I'm really grateful for that. And then, you know, we've also been working with environmental consultant. We have a team that's in season right now, the wrestling team in that facility, and until we got, you know, an environmental team in there to test the, you know, particulates in the air and things like that, with all the work that's been done and what happened in there, I just didn't want to put any kids in there, of course. So working with that company too. Also, GSBA's been great as far as the adjusters and the people working through, and the insurance company, they've been really helpful to help us walk through this. So we also, since we've been back from the break, our Goodman and I went through all the schools and our buildings throughout the district just to do a facility and safety walkthrough, just kind of make some notes, take a look. We obviously got the principal of the building involved or they're designated, so they could help us view some areas that maybe needed some attention or somewhere that they felt like maybe could use extra cameras, for instance, or was a kind of a dead spot in their, in their school. And so obviously, we're going to continue to look for ways that we can make sure these buildings stay safe, but also in great work in order because, you know, our job on the facility side is to make sure that they have a safe place to conduct, to educate the kids. I mean, it's really, really tough. They don't feel safe, and they don't have a good place to learn. So that's pretty much it for facilities in that area. Transportation, I did repeat a few things from the last board meeting on this, just give some numbers and updates. You know, we do some double routes that show you some numbers there. We had 129 total routes for our last full month of school, which were in November, that were covered by extra personnel. So if we didn't have those extra personnel, that's, you know, 20, roughly 20 school days for truly November, you had a break in there too. So that's, that's a lot of, that's a lot of routes to get covered. So again, everybody being team players is huge. We need more CDL drivers, of course. Like most of the schools around us, I struggle with having enough folks to drive the buses, looking at different measures to attract. We're probably going to bring something to you, possibly to Dr. Goodman, at the next board meeting, hopefully. That's a, that's a policy we'd like to get you guys to look at. It might help us retain or attract some new drivers, but also retaining them is important too. And so want to make sure we're doing everything we can. Great department, the office folks, the technicians, drivers, monitors, great group of people, and they're here for the right reason. School nutrition, we have been doing a lot of work, or not necessarily us through our department, but Beth worked closely and got a lot of this lined up. It's been going on for months. I'm going to get Beth to come up here and talk about this real quick. We have done some work in these cafeterias that is amazing, and there's some pictures that Martha will pull up here in just a second. Beth, do you want to say something about this real quick? You want to tell them what exactly how the money came about and how this was funded?
Oh, sure.
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine. Whatever you want to do.
So actually, going back to Amy's budget report, in the area where school nutrition is in there, I'm guilty of spending more than earning so far this year, but that was by plan. That was by design because last, the last two years, we accrued a higher fund balance because we were feeding all the students at no charge and getting a free reimbursement rate back for everybody. So with that newfound money, I found an opportunity to work with a decor company, and we went and did some updates in Hill City Harmony and Jasper Middle so far, and we'll show you the pictures. And so met with the principals, came up with a design, and you'll see the themes. And then we were also able to work with operations, finance, and SPOS to go ahead and buy new cafeteria tables, which were desperately needed. They were falling apart. So anyway, I'll show you those pictures here shortly, but that's where the money came from. So it's my gift.
Yeah, thank you. If you don't mind scrolling through those, to those pictures so they can see some of the signage and some of the upgrades that are there.
So in each of those cafeterias, we went ahead and got this, this is a rail. This thing is like five feet in diameter, so it's a big lighted sign, and there's one for Hill City Harmony. And also at Hill City, of course, we have our farm right there in our, right outside the cafeteria, so we've got a farm theme. I wanted to share these pictures.
So we've got a farm theme and I wanted to share these pictures because some of you probably haven't had a chance to get into the schools and maybe this will, um, get you just to kinda see what we're doing. We're trying to make it more inviting for the, for the students. Um, and again, Hill City is all about the farm, that's interesting there, that's, uh, just a little peek of. All, all the materials, most all of them is, is on this, uh, really heavy PDF board that's actually mounted to the wall. First, everything was painted, the walls were primed and painted and then these things were mounted to the wall. They can be removed and that's one of the things that we looked at. So if we need to take it down, we can, it's not a permanent fixture, so. Um, that's just a, a view of, um, the cafeteria with the tables, um, just showing that. And then there's Harmony and their sign and the eagles. And the lights around those can change to hundreds of different colors and they can flash and do all sorts of fun things. Everything that makes me, maybe we'll do that next. One of the exciting things at Harmony is you see the windows of the cafeteria, we had, um, clings put on there. So we were like, what's at the high school in the, in the, um, senior lounge, senior cafeteria? Um, and so that was a real pretty thing with the eagle, um, in the backdrop and all that. And, um, where's, is Marla here? I'm right here, I'm right here. Hi, I've seen you forever. So, um, a good, all the principals, you know, came together with their ideas and we just tried to make it happen. And it didn't take long, it was almost a year long from start to finish. And I think they were all thinking I wasn't serious about it, but eventually. That's a look in the serving line, just put some, you know, food, fitness type of materials for the kids. Um, you know, just painting that serving line area white made a huge difference, it just illuminated everything. So it was such a dingy color. And again, the colors, also you'll notice the floors, that's not me, that was done, that was a surprise to me when over the summer they went ahead and replaced all the floors and put that LVT tile down. So it looks beautiful, um, it's just a whole amount of culmination. Now, this is Jasper Middle School and is, in the, in the words of a lot of our kids, this is pretty sick. It's really industrial, you know, brick and mortar and metal and all that kinda stuff. But, um, yeah, this one was, um, and Cory's not here, but, um, Cory helped me with this. And I'm like, Cory, what's your style? So he pulls out his phone and he shows me all these pictures of his basement he's been renovating. This is my style, I'm like, ooh, I like that. So that's what we did, um, so we just put stuff everywhere, um, tied it into, you know, the dragons, um, messages for the students and then of course the, uh, we got new cafeteria tables there too, so. Um, it's all, let's see, did you have the picture where the little room is where the brick is at? Oh, that was with the first one, yeah. And then, you know, the serving line at Jasper Middle, that's part of the old part of the school before the renovation was done, I believe. I mean, the, the back part wall there, so we've got that old brick, so it just limited itself, that's kinda why we went with that theme. So, anyway, um, I hope that you can get out there and see the schools and, um, and I hope the kids appreciated it and enjoy it and, um, and it just makes it a brighter, more cheerful place for the kids to, so, like a restaurant.
Thank you, Beth, and the pictures really don't do it justice, so.
You have to go.
You gotta see it, you gotta see it. And, um, just wanna give Beth kudos, her and her team do a great job. They're also very short-staffed and they're, they're trying to, uh, cover lines and, um, cashiers and things from time to time, so. Um, and we had a couple cooler issues over the break, cooler freezer issues, so, um, she was, uh, helpful to get, help us get on the right track there. And then my last part of the report involves health services from, um, our health service director, Gil Smith. We, we have been looking at trying to make, to get all our schools to the Heart Safe School Designation. Uh, Harmony Elementary has met this criteria and the goal is to get everybody there. I know Hill City, um, is right there too and they're really close. And so, I know everybody is working toward that to get completion. Our goal, uh, my goal, I guess, um, in my thinking was by the end of the year, but, um, Ms. Smith says that we're gonna get there faster than that. So, um, she said that, not me said. Um, but, uh, I feel confident we'll get there and that's a really, um, a big distinction, um, for, uh, heart safety, obviously. A lot of stuff's been in the news recently regarding that, got a lot of people's attention as well. So, um, that's something she's really been pushing and working on. And then, um, our mobile health services, there's some recognition coming, uh, for how this has been set up within our district with a local healthcare provider. So, um, Gil will probably be talking about that in the future. And then there's some resource for families identifies, uh, the Children Medical Services. Will cover the medical costs if anyone has a physical or physician diagnosed medical condition, which includes doctor visits, transportation equipment, and to prevent blindness of majority, covers the cost of eye exams and glasses and that money is available at this time. So, we, um, obviously we'll be working with schools, nurse, school nurses, counselors, administrators, identify any needs that are out there, make sure these kids are cared for and, and, you know, have what they need. Um, because them being healthy is vital for them learning and that's what we are here to try to make sure we're doing. Gotta get them healthy first, so, um, that's all I have for health services and for my report. Can I answer any questions for you guys? Yes, sir.
Going back to where we had the issues over the break, the freezing and the water pipes. Um, in the fill house, were you able to, uh, save the uniforms?
Yes, so, uh, we were fortunate, we have a, a textile company here in Pickens County. They were able to take the uniforms and run them through an ozone chamber, make sure there were no contaminants, make sure they were cleaned properly, they're currently storing, housing them for us. They even like shoulder pads to add fabric on. You know, anything that was, um, exposed to water, um, for that, that much water for a long period of time, obviously run through there, make sure. And if anything was not able to be decontaminated or whatever, then they let us know and then, you know, that goes through part of the insurance. But, um, as of now, they're able, they were able to salvage all that and it's a good thing because I know it seems like a long time for football season, but if you put an order in for, like for say, a Nike jersey, right now you'd be hard pressed to get it customized by the time football season, you know, they would need them. So, I'm glad we were able to salvage those, much different situation than what you would experience with a fire or something like that. So they were able to be salvaged, um, all the uniforms and there's three sets for just varsity, so, um, JV uniforms, all that stuff. We had no loss there on the fabric, but it was due to them being able to get there so quickly and also running through their system and through, um, how they, how they do things to make sure they're, um, up to par and no damage that we can't be unknown about washing, dry cleaning, all the process they go through to decontaminate. So, uh, very fortunate there that they were able to get to it that quickly. So, um, yeah, it's, it's unfortunate, um, that it happened, but, um, we just unprecedented cold weather and, um, we just, we just couldn't, couldn't handle it in that facility.
I think y'all done an excellent job, fantastic.
Yeah, well, I agree, it was, well, thank you.
Thank your team, you all did wonderful.
It was, it was, we had to call a lot of people, a lot of, a lot of help. And, um, maintenance guys, like I said, out there, these guys being local and one guy said, hey, we're slammed up, we got a ton to do, the mitigation company, but you guys are local, you're in our backyard, we're gonna come take care of you. And that was, that was huge too, and he's helped me through a lot of the process. So, yeah, it's been good team effort, that's what it takes, community rally around us when we're especially in need of things like that. And so, um, we'll get it straightened out and get it fixed and, um, you know, go forward and make it better than it was to start with, so. Yeah, thanks, any other questions?
Now, Chris, that, that damage and, and repair and reclamation of, of wet items, that's covered under insurance?
Yes, yes, uh, we had damage, you know, in, in other places too, but, um, and you may have correct me if I'm wrong, but there's one deductible even if it's multiple claims within the single event, um, is how they, they determine it. And, um, of course, most of the damage was there and, uh, uh, they've been great. GSBA's been awesome, adjusters have been out there, um, calling the check, anything, well, you know, help guide us as well. So they're a great resource for us and they, they provide that, uh, service for us and they've been great. And I know they've also been swamped because they told us, you know, we have a lot going on too, that they've been Johnny on the spot as well. So, just been, you know, it's made it easier when you have people that wanna work with you, so that helped out a whole lot.
And I think most parents want access to that ozone chamber once a week once football's.
Absolutely. Any other questions? Thank you all very much.
Thank you. And Ms. Cho, can you give us a curriculum update, please?
Good evening, I appreciate the opportunity to give you an update on the curriculum and instruction team, or funding curriculum and instruction team. Uh, students grades K-8 have completed winter benchmarks and the results are encouraging and something our school should celebrate and as a district that we should celebrate. Every grade level, grades three through eight, showed overall growth in both English Language Arts and Mathematics on the Georgia Beacon Benchmark from fall to winter. Um, and again, that's grades three through eight in both subject areas. Beacon allows educators to target instruction. It gives them information, uh, to help them make informed decisions on, uh, how they should proceed in the classroom. It is mapped to the Georgia Standards of Excellence and is adaptive in design. So that means as a student is working, uh, in Beacon, if they begin to struggle or the program picks up that they're struggling, it will adjust the material that they're being tested on. So it does adjust to where the student is performing, so that teachers, when they look at the data, can have accurate information. Beacon is aligned to the Georgia Milestones in multiple ways, uh, including the standards that are assessed, uh, the item tops that are administered, the platform that is used, and the tools and accommodations that are available to students on Georgia Milestones are also available to them as it would be, uh, on the Beacon. Uh, the Beacon also provides, uh, for teachers and parents, an estimated performance on the end of the year Georgia Milestones assessment. And it is just a prediction, um, that, you know, it gives guidance to the teacher, um, on the individual student report so that, um, you know, if that's something that they want to look at or parents are curious, then, then they can see that. Many districts across the state have utilized this free resource, uh, for several years. This is the first year that Pickens County has collectively, uh, participated in Beacon. Some of our schools did use it sporadically last year, but collectively we have used it in grades three through eight, uh, for this year. Additional benchmark data sources reviewed by our team mid-year also indicate that student growth is occurring, uh, in other grade levels. So we are excited to, uh, report that. Our schools have certainly, uh, invested a lot into, uh, trying to close learning gaps for our students and we are beginning to see, uh, some of those, uh, results. We have preliminary Georgia Milestones and of course data for the winter. The winter scores are aggregated with fall mid-month scores. Fall mid-month scores come from students who, um, who maybe were absent when it was administered in the spring, so they're taking it, um, in the fall, uh, because they are required to, to have that score. So, they combine the fall mid-month data with the students who participate in the winter of ELC and then they'll release the final scores in February. And so, once we have those final scores, we will bring those, um, to you guys and provide that to you.
And ELC is 912, right?
Yes, ELC is 912. Mr. Martin has, um, he has had an opportunity to see the preliminary numbers. Um, he and I have met and, uh, talked about some, you know, different things and, you know, he has a plan to, uh, you know, moving forward to look at that, but we'll be able to share that with you once we do have the final numbers. Uh, response to intervention or RTI is going well in the district. Um, RTI is intentional skill-based learning supports that are provided to students, uh, who have learning gaps. And it is, uh, providing, uh, support for key foundational skills. So if you have a student that's in third grade and they are in RTI, they're probably missing skills from kindergarten, first, second grade. And so, response to intervention allows, um, school staff and resources that they have to work with these students to address those skills, um, to close the learning gap so that students can hopefully achieve and move up to the young grade level. And one of the pieces like the Beacon is data that we do gather that helps teachers to know which students do need, uh, those types of support. Uh, schools continually do a great job working to meet the needs of their students. Uh, one of the things that I've been impressed about is, um, when they, uh, receive data about student performance, they work to reallocate human resources. If they need to restructure where some of the supports are, they do that. If they need to, uh, you know, adjust their school schedule to meet the needs of a greater number of students, then they're making those adjustments to meet those needs. Um, and they're using data to do that, it's not something that they're just willy-nilly in, in deciding to do. Uh, teachers play a key role in how we've developed and modified our RTI procedures this year. Um, I've told several of them in, in meetings that, for lack of a better description, we've been building the plan as we have flown it this year and it's continuing to stay in the air. Uh, so that is exciting. We have created a district RTI team that will be traveling in February to attend a three-day RTI, uh, conference where we will be able to work with a consultant and then we'll look at the process that we have in place. Um, and then we'll be able to make some adjustments based on research and other, um, information so that we can provide the best response to intervention opportunities, uh, for our students. We are taking a team of eight people. Six of those individuals will be teachers. We felt like it's important, uh, teachers are involved in, uh, carrying out the work of providing those supports and we feel like their voice is important, so we have included, uh, one teacher from each school that will go and be the voice for, you know, for their school, their grade level. Um, and they'll be part of our team as we, you know, work to finalize and improve, um, improve that plan. Any questions? Our schools have been very busy.
No question, Ms. Cho, I call you Ms. Cho because that's how I know you. Um, the RTI, they, I did, we identify through a school. If a parent has a need, can they come in and say, hey, can they request RTI for their children?
They could, they can, uh, what they should do is reach out to the teacher and then the teacher can share with them all of the pieces of information that they have. Um, sometimes, um, and principals, you can speak up, but, uh, sometimes I think parents have concern, but then when they, when the teacher actually sits down and shows them all the things, I think it puts their minds at ease, especially if, you know, maybe they have two children and one is outperforming the other. So, but yes, parents can certainly reach out. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cho.
Chair, chair.
Thank you all, very informative reports. Next item, direction items. The first item is approval of personnel. Do I have a motion to approve the personnel report as presented?
I move to approve the personnel report as presented.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Wayo and Ms. Gibson. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor? Next item, approval of financial reports. Do I have a motion to approve the financial reports? Ms. Smith presenting.
I make a motion to approve those financial reports.
I'll second.
Is there any further discussion? All those in favor? I'm gonna have to move that mic for me. Okay, we amended this motion earlier.
That's the correct, that's the correct measure.
It is the correct one. Okay, do, uh, do I have a motion to approve to pursue a superintendent search with the Georgia School Board Association? Mr. Wiggent and.
I second that.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor? I have a document on the counter. The next item be the Board of Education regular meeting schedule. There is one amendment to move the June meeting to June 8th, that'd be the one change. Do I have a motion to approve the 2023 County Board of Education Regular Board Meeting Schedule with this one amendment?
I move to approve that schedule.
I'll second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Next item is approval of minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from the December 8th called board meeting?
So moved.
And, and the December 8th regular board meeting as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Next item is approval of surplus. And the, the surplus includes various electronics, outdated damage, library books. I think everybody had a chance to review those. Do we have a motion to approve the surplus for Biggs Jr., I Media Center and Taylor Menory Media Center as presented?
So moved.
Second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Next item is public participation. Dr. Goodman, do we have any request for public participation?
We receive them.
All right, now, the next item is board comments. Any of the, do we have any board members, anyone want to make some comments?
Mr. Sherwood, I'd just like to tell all you folks that are here and people watching that I'm genuinely excited about being here and being here with this group of people. I, I know that we're here to make a difference for our kids and our community, and that's been evident in just the time we've spent together in the last two weeks. Really excited about Dr. Goodman and working with her in this interim role. And we, I think we've already developed a good working relationship. And I would just ask, I'm grateful for all our staff. One thing that's become clear to me, even though everybody here knows I've had issues with our last board, and what I want you to know is what I've come to understand is our system functions because of some great administrators and teachers and some key people here that do a great job. And, but here's what I want you to know, too. I often dream and think, how much better can it be when we have great leadership who is leading that ship? And that's my goal, and that's our goal, is to see this become the best thing that it can be in Pickens County. And so, I'm committed to doing that, and I know these folks are, and we've talked a lot about that. I'm excited about Mr. Wallace taking on his role. I know who he is and what he's going to do within that role. And I just ask you, teachers and administrators, we can't, we can't change everything immediately. Give us some patience and time to work with you and to see what we can do. And of course, the most important thing we're going to do immediately is seek out a great next leader for our system. And I'm committed to finding we are the best one that we can. So, I just want you to know, I am, I'm genuinely excited about being here and doing what I can to help this system become everything that we can be.
And I'd like to follow that up for just a moment. Administrators and teachers in this community have been so supportive. Every time I've needed something, Chris Wallace will see me at a ballgame and will talk about it. Amy is good with numbers, and this week, Coach, or Chris Parker helped me out with something big. So, anytime that we call, anytime that I've called, they have been more than supportive. To answer the question, if they didn't have an answer, Dr. Goodman, she gets an answer that day. I mean, she's, she's on it. So, I appreciate you and Ms. Scho, too, through Facebook, we communicate. So, all of you, thank you, that have, that have helped out.
Thank you.
My turn. Christopher, her magnificent watch kids, then congratulations to them. Chris, make sure to thank all of your team that came in right, right after Christmas, working hard to, to take care of those facilities. There's so much going on. The RTI, I understand a lot of kids are, have, have called up and been moved, you know, already back on grade level. That's fantastic. That's what we're, that's, we couldn't ask for any better than that. And I want to compliment everyone who's involved there, and thank you for your efforts. And please overlook my mistakes as a chair, I'm trying. Anyone else? Do I have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
So moved.
I'll second that.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor? We are adjourned. Have a good night, everyone.
Thank you, everybody. I'm so glad we all got home safe tonight.